Oh, I'm sorry. Public hearing on the, we're in a public hearing, I'm sorry. Starting to bring it on me. Okay, a motion open in public hearing on the fact that we local law one on the factory street no parking either side. A motion?
I'll make it second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, carry. Muncie, are all the proper papers filed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Kevin, uh, just a quick synopsis, I mean, we have your recommendation, Buddy's recommendation, and the chief's recommendation.
Local law one of two thousand and nineteen, um, they took the amendment vehicle traffic law to prohibit parking on both sides of factory street with its entire length from seventeen K to its turn.
Okay. All right, any comments from the public? Okay, if none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, carry. Let's adopt those minutes again, just because we went out of order. Motion to approve the minutes again, October fifteen. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, carry. Uh, no request to meet with the board, but we have the old business coming up in a second. Uh, abstract number ten, two thousand and nineteen, motion to approve.
I make it second.
Uh, any discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, carry. Okay, update on unsafe building, one forty-five Ward Street, um, I see you're making progress there, who's gonna go see the update, Bruce, you or?
Well, I, I'll give you the update, I've got, um, there's progress being made, it's, uh, the interior is being, uh, secured, and, uh, I've got, you know, a lot of stuff done already, I get firewall half done, and some structural stuff being done on the main supports in the building, and that temporary windows put into place.
Deciding a roofing, you progress quite a bit too, it looks like.
Yeah, yep, absolutely.
Okay, that meets your satisfaction, Bruce, right?
I was there today, I'm happy.
Okay.
It's another one, it's another one put well.
Thank you for going, I know we were a little abrupt with you about meeting, so.
Yeah, I know, and it's, you know, like I told you before, it's a, it's a slow process for me because it's, you know, it's a money issue for me to, you know, the long process, it's planned to be done in three months, which I wish it could have been, but it's just not even, it's coming, it's coming.
So what's the, the plan for the track for future, is it gonna be six months down the road, do we see a lot more work done?
Oh, yeah, you'll see, you'll see progress going on, like you have now in the last three months, you know, it's, it's gonna take some time, that though.
When you say temporary windows, what do you mean temporary?
Well, I put temporary windows in it because I didn't put the, the new windows in it yet because I've gotta move the building around a little bit and gotta change some stuff around it. I just was trying to make it look good for the street purpose, street side, you know.
Okay. All right, any questions in the board? Okay, thanks for coming in, appreciate it.
Perfect, thank you.
Uh, Bruce, uh, ID one Roosevelt?
ID one Roosevelt, uh, they, uh, they paid the, uh, fee that, uh, the village paid, uh, uh, the last, the people that we paid, Ballinger, that we paid for the mold, the analization, the first one, the fee was, they paid back to the village for the fees that we paid. The, uh, Ron Quill of, uh, G E O, uh, Ron Quill of, uh, excuse me, can I make, is that the name here? Two six four two Liberty Ridge Court, uh, he got hold of, uh, G E O Environmental, he worked on heights, and, uh, the end of this week here, they're, they're done with the final air test on the inside for the mold results on that one. And they'll have the results to me next week sometime, but I'll be in school. So.
So you'll keep us apprised of what's going on there?
Yeah, but he's just making sure, he wants to make sure before he closes up the walls and, and for me to make sure that it's on the up and up, that, uh, it's on the up and up. He's doing it for his own good too. Okay?
All right, thanks Bruce. All right, chief? Uh, report on the?
Sure. Um, this Friday, um, the elementary school will be having a, uh, Veterans Day ceremony out front, if the weather is bad, they're gonna be moving inside set nine forty-five.
The door's five thirteen.
Uh, nine forty-five is what I have. They did ask us to assist with traffic control, um, Officer Schmidt will be there, we also have two officers that are regular scheduled each Friday, they'll assist with any traffic that gets out of hand. The district attorney's office is also offering, uh, administering training on the new criminal justice reform being implemented by the state. We'll be sending all of our full-time officers and any part-time officers that aren't being sent by the full-time agency. There will be some overtime costs, uh, with that training, but it's mandated, it's required, so we have to send them. And I have been in touch with, uh, New York State D O T regarding, uh, the commercial vehicle enforcement training that we talked about before. It's more complicated than I had originally anticipated, and there's going to be some costs associated with that. I won't go into it tonight, but I'll put it, put together a synopsis in an email for the board, so that you can talk about it in this group, decide if that's the direction we want to go in. That's all I have.
Something I have to ask you. Okay, Buddy?
Well, the village fall heat, still working on that, hopefully, hopefully by Wednesday, um, with any luck possibly tomorrow, there'll be some parts that were backlogged that were damaged during shipping or.
They saw it working all weekend, library's done too.
Yeah, the library's all done, that's all complete, so, um, that's certainly working good there, and hopefully, hopefully maybe by tomorrow, when everything goes okay. But not holding my breath. But, though, it's gotta be done by Thursday, this Thursday it's gonna turn cold. So this week, um, as you heard, probably our first snowstorm will be this week, um, not gonna be a two-day event in my year, but it may involve some of the other projects that we just started today getting our snow stuff ready, so, most of the week we'll be doing that, and doing a little water main work tomorrow. Other than that, we're working at the sewer plant, the roof is, um, plywood's on, tarp paper's on, and we got a tarp right now. So as soon as this gets wrapped up, we'll finish this shingle down there, and that'll be, sewer plant will be wrapped up. So the sewer operator's really happy that his paperwork is not getting all drenched every time it rains. So, um, he's excited about that, he says he doesn't care if it shingles on, now everything's dry in there, he's happy. Other than that, um, we need to pick up started, we're gonna continue that until the last, probably the last weekend in November.
How close are you still gone?
What's that?
Compost site, site is still open?
Yeah, that's, that's non-stop, and right now it's, everybody got everything in this weekend, so, yeah, uh, took our entire lot of swarmer's pool there. Well, it's a weekend, I think we have some outside users coming in, by some of the looks at some of the piles, and especially with the storms over the, um, last week. Yeah, I think we may have had a little commercial dumping over the weekend, but.
Might use the.
A little harder to put a camera up or something.
Yeah. I'm not sure I'll get cameras for the whole building, and I don't, hopefully that deters some people.
Anything else?
Um, I think that's all I got.
All right, thanks, buddy. Okay, uh, all right, I'll entertain a motion to adopt a resolution designating the board trustees as lead agency and issue negative deck under seeker for local law one. Motion?
I'll make that, second.
Any second? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, carry. Okay, and then I'll entertain a motion to, um.
Gonna be adopting this as local law number three, since you had two other local laws that were struggled last year but adopted beginning of the year, so.
Okay, amending the chapter one fourteen of the code of village Montgomery entitled vehicles, no, that's another thing.
No, yeah.
That's it, okay, all right, I'm sorry, prohibited parking on both sides of factory street. Okay, a motion to approve that?
I'll make it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carry. Okay. Mr. Muncie, you're back to you.
Uh, to me, I'll give it all to Muncie as a package.
Thank you, that's, second. Uh, adopt a resolution authorizing trustee Darlene Dulcic to execute public safety and emergency radio communication system interoperability agreement and accept the equipment. This is for what the county's been doing for the last two years, and definitely enhance communications throughout the county orange. Motion?
I'll make that motion.
You did second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, carry. Mike, take it away on the D O T terms.
Okay, as we discussed before, um, on the, on the D O T terms, uh, we can form committees, we can sit around, we can invite people from all over, and months, years can go by, we want something now. Now, here what I have to say here, many of my friends drive trucks, they have driven trucks, and I reached out to them, there's a lot of those friends who are state to a police and assigned to the D O T enforcement. I asked them, both the truckers and the police, why somebody wanna come through here? The trucker's response was, no seasoned truck driver wanted to travel through the village of Montgomery or any village similar. The reasons for traveling through Montgomery are local deliveries, and even local delivery, they try to make arrangements that deliver, to make the switch at the A and P or ShopRite parking lot. Examples being snowbirds coming up to Florida, having their cars dropped off, they fly up, they have their car dropped off in, in ShopRite, and they switch there. They don't wanna come to the village, they don't wanna damage their trucks, they don't wanna get trees, they don't wanna get in trouble. Another thing the truckers said, the seasoned truckers, is to avoid D O T enforcement areas, and the other thing is they get lost, so they wind up here. On the police end, it was, avoid the D O T enforcement and walk out. License problems with the truckers, out of class licenses, suspended, no drivers licensed to be a truck driver. Also, they avoid, they have D O T violations, brakes, overweight vehicles, we want that coming through here? So now only are trucks coming through here, it's the trucks with problems. We don't want that through here. And, another thing, warrants or issues with the drivers themselves. Now, where I worked before here, down in the US plant, Treasury Department, we had to check everybody coming in, it was amazing. You'd have to worry about U P S, FedEx, all the big truck drivers, you had to worry, you worry about the fly-by-nights coming through, warrants on, we were making arrests right there. When they go through these D O T checklist, they find their warrants from, they get locked up, that's what they do, they come through here. And the other thing is illegal cargo. Your guess is as good as mine for illegal cargos, coming down Union Street. Now, for probably close to forty years, my wife and I have traveled this entire country camping in those small little villages and towns, we observed many types of enforcement rules. Temporary speed bumps, permanent speed bumps, slower speed limit truck signs just for truckers, stop signs that not only enforce but control speed, specifically San Oversteem, municipal curfews, and this is pretty cool, up in Maine, Kenny Bumpford, you pick up a flag, walk across the street, put it on the other side, back and forth. These are things that happen all over the place here. This is kind of dated, but in a camp, we have a C V radio, we also have all the modern stuff, the G P S, the waves and all that stuff, you have a C V radio. C V radio, real quickly, oh, there's a tire in the road, boom, we go around it. On the C V radio, we hear truckers speaking about how to avoid D O T curfew areas. And we were just down in Florida, and we were listening to this because of the last meeting, I was paying attention to this. How they avoid D O T areas, they're saying this back and forth. In my driveway, I turned on the C V radio, listening to truck stops over here, and I heard truckers giving directions, how to get through the village of Montgomery to avoid the D O T stop over here, and walk out, which is always an effect. Also, how to avoid, how to go down two oh seven, Oz Mills Road, Jackson Avenue, how to avoid the train bridges, to get back on seventeen to go eighty-four west. I contacted the D O T division and sent an email about this matter. A verbal response was, we see no problem in putting a sign up, but expect a written, uh, written response within two months. Steve informed me, four months they're saying. Okay, goes back to committees upon committees upon committees, oh, I'm sorry, Buddy said that. We can, we can sit and have committees forever, and then, by then, the Jetsons will be flying. We should put these signs, I want some, I would like to see signs, on poles, our own poles, on seventeen K, going this way and going that way. And it would say something like, truckers, not commercial drivers, truckers, take notice, D O T violations strictly enforced. Not commercial drivers, truckers, this is nothing more than telling the trucker we're enforcing the law. If you're a bad guy, then you're going to break in the house, and there's a sign on the lawn that says, word of warning, we have an Apex burger alarm, you're gonna go to the next house. So I'm hoping that's what's done with the trucker. They don't want problems with their driver's licenses. Bottom line, we're not looking to enforce these violations, 'cause we don't want them in here, we don't even want them to come in here. Could you imagine our police stopping two or three big, big trucks on Union Street here? So we just wanna go somewhere else, it's like taking a net, putting over your food at, at, uh, the summertime, let the flies go somewhere else. Safety, on the safety thing, my wife has driven a school bus to Valley Central for many, many years. She says it's a real tight squeeze passing a fifty-three foot tractor trailer up in Union Street at eight o'clock in the morning with sixty kids in the school bus. Again, my, what I'd like to say is just say, notice truckers, take note, D O T violations strictly enforced. Steve could work out, like he was just saying, our chief could work out something, possibly inviting the state police here to do something, to do the D O T enforcement, whenever they feel like it. Just come in here, and it doesn't mean that we have to go through the, you know, the whole training, that could still pull them over and have suspended licenses. You know, you never know what you're gonna pull over, you might think you get a taillight out, and the next thing you got a warrant or a mistake, whatever. We want them on that C V radio saying, don't go through Montgomery, don't go through Montgomery. It's again, it's nothing more than just getting word out there. Some facts about, commercial driver's licenses are down in this country, well over a million. According to the information I received, the average truck driver has eighteen months behind the wheel. Eighteen months, I mean, we see signs all over the place, my wife says they can't get bus drivers over there. Who wants to drive their truck, eighteen months, now driving through here, to, to the elementary school. A legitimate, a legitimate truck driver that is employed by a company is not afraid of the D O T check. That truck, that FedEx truck, that U P S truck, they brakes are good, everything's good, they're registered. It's mostly fly-by-night independent ones that try to avoid these checks. Truck drivers are concerned with any violations attached to their commercial driver's license, this is their livelihood, they're more concerned with going through speeding and local laws. Like I said, possibly the police department in conjunction, in conjunction with D O T can, can do inspections here. Remember, the C V radio, word gets out fast, we're always known as don't speed to the village of Montgomery. Like, don't, don't take trucks over here, and all the costs, I mean, I, I think the village, I, I had price booked, those, the signs on all four point, corners of the village, they were fifty dollars apiece. So it's fifty dollars apiece for the curfew, not the curfew signs, the, uh, the award-winning signs with a stop one hundred, safest. So we put four signs there that say, to get the truck drivers' attention. That's, I'd like to make a motion, move that.
Well, I'd like to, you know, some of the concepts that I don't, we, we need to check out, just legally what we can do. We don't have poles of our own in the village, really, you know, we got to have an understanding sign that we put these on. I don't think we have our poles to put any signs on.
Oh, we can.
We, no, no, Mike was saying put them on our, our poles, I don't think we have.
Well, we can. Yeah, but it'll be ours, it'll be up to us.
Yeah, our pole, okay, that's what you meant, yeah, yeah, well, I'd just like to see what we can legally do, and we, you know, you're talking about.
I'm sure mine would like that, I'm sure it'd be, that'd be the problem.
Yeah, it's like you say, almost as seen on TV.
Yeah.
You know, we have one going, put it up towards railroad tracks, so the guys, whoa, okay, let me keep going that way, or put it down towards, uh, towards Bridge Street, they don't turn down here, and have another one out by four sixteen. If we cut it down in half, it's something, or we can form a committee upon a committee upon a committee.
Well, it might be a deterrent, let's just make sure we can do it.
Well, we can do that.
And give us a, uh, do you like to do with the safe villages sign, give us, give us a draft that we can look at, and then go forward?
Well, I think it should be a basic, cheap sign that, that gets their attention. You know, I mean, it doesn't, we don't want it to look, to look nice, because we want it to get their attention, like, uh, you know. Don't do this.
You know, something you can mention the Orangeville Road, because many in Callahan is that way, so, you know, a lot of town trust, a lot of, so, the troopers are sitting on the Orangeville Road.
Yeah.
Now, last week.
You know what we used to do, and I don't back into my career, but I, I do, I would set up traffic, um, roadblocks on the Water Street in, in, in Newburgh. I could care less if you had to do inspection, I really could care less, my father was an old time heat cop, he said, don't, don't, don't be ragged so quick to get the, to get the working guy. So I would set these things up, and we, and give escape routes, and we'd stand there, and you remember, we'd stand there, and we'd wait, and we could care less what was in the car. We're waiting for the guy to go up to the side, that's the guy with the warrant, that's what we're looking for, we're looking to break the guy, the honest guy going to work. And like I said, the decent guy, the decent truck driver, the U P S, he doesn't care, he knows his truck is good. Like, two men in their truck, and I don't wanna take on that company, but three men in their truck, it's like, you wanna drive trucks? Yeah, okay, damn, how's your license? That's all right, let's move some stuff. Oh, that's good to Montgomery, passing my wife and sixty kids in the bus, I don't think so, now my grandkids are on the bus? Nah. And, and we walk this village every single day, so, I don't wanna go out that way.
Maybe you can also, when they have a D O T check, I don't know, people, what the troopers do not, but just have, when they're doing the check, just have a trooper sitting on the village.
We've done, we've done, uh, informal traffic studies, informal, meaning sitting on the side of our county trucks. We noticed no difference in increase in truck traffic when there's a checkpoint on eighty-four that's coming in there, westbound, no difference.
I'm so, so, I'm sorry, Steve, so.
How, how, over how long a period?
Sit there for an hour, one of the, the, uh, checkpoints going on in westbound eighty-four, because we've had complaints, previous meetings, about maybe that was the issue with the trucks coming through the village. So we designated someone to sit there, on the day that they were doing that, do it again on the days where there is no checkpoint, and there was no difference in the number of trucks. But that was sitting on eighty-four watching trucks turning from seventeen K, we weren't counting the trucks that were going through seventeen K, maybe we should.
And, and have signs there, just have the signs, just have the signs, we, you know.
Well, the signs might be a deterrent, let's get, uh, you know, let's get some kind of draft and see what we can, you know, and have it reviewed, and maybe we'll pass it.
Yes.
Because it's tough to pass something here where they just, you know, without seeing it.
Well, I just want the, I just want the blessing to keep going.
Yeah, no, I, I, I don't know, does the board have a problem, I don't have a problem with that. Do you have a line we have to D O T tip with you? We were gonna talk about that tonight. Is it in the package? Okay, here it is, oh, this is the draft that we're gonna send to the, and I asked for further input, Kevin did a pretty good draft in this, so, so I'll read it, and we'll, and we'll continue while we're, everybody. Uh, dear, who are we addressing this to, Department of New York State D O T? Okay, the board of trustees of the village of Montgomery has been in contact with David Church, Orange County Planning Commissioner regarding the availability of funds for traffic study throughout Orange County Transit, for a traffic study through Orange County Transportation Council. It is our understanding that New York State D O T can facilitate the designation of the Transportation Council funds for such a study. The village and its residents are concerned about the potential truck traffic impacts on the village of two large warehouse facilities presently being considered by the town of Montgomery Planning Board. The one point three million square foot Medline facility being proposed on New York State Route four sixteen and the one million plus square foot facility being proposed on New York State Route seventeen K and New York State Route seven forty-seven area. In addition to these facilities, there is also a proposal before the village planning board for two warehouses off New York State Route two eleven that will add an additional twenty, two hundred ninety thousand square feet of commercial space. Tractor trailers traveling through our historic village have always presented a problem at various places such as the Route seventeen K, Route two eleven intersection, and Route two eleven, Route four sixteen intersection. The potential impacts of more tractor trailers from the, the three projects noted above coming through the village could be a nightmare to the village. Since these roads are all state highways, we are requesting your assistance in helping the village determine what those impacts are and what potential solutions can be implemented. Okay, is that okay with everybody? I may ask more input, and Diane did say something about the, the intersection of two eleven, I want you to think about the, the safety, which Mike just alluded to, Sue driving the bus also, we add that, and then we'll send this off, I'll send this off.
Around the elementary school?
No, right at the intersection of two eleven and, and seventeen K. Was it, okay. Yeah, but it doesn't, doesn't say about the, the safety.
No, it doesn't say anything about school buses, it just about the problem of any sector of tractor trailers.
Yeah, but may, maybe mention something specifically about, about safety. Because it is a precarious situation. All right, and then we'll, we'll send this off, right? There's no further additions? Okay. Good. All right. Okay, moving right on, village hall is closed Monday, uh, the eleventh, Veterans Day, and village hall will be closed on, um, Thursday, November twenty-eighth, and Friday, November twenty-ninth. Anything else before we go to public portion?
One thing, Steve.
Yeah.
There are one thing, um, we got a cord from dash lock and key, for the two back doors, um, so they can secure those, they can always be locked, but then again, in case, please, anybody got in an emergency, it's, yeah, keep that to answer this downstairs or rectify our escape.
Were you able to negotiate a little bit better?
Um, not yet, but the, this thirty-one hundred dollar, maybe two cents for that.
And we're gonna get a partial grant for that too, right?
Well, we got money back from Comp Alliance.
It's two thousand and fifty-eight dollars.
Two thousand and fifty-eight.
So we're not too far along.
But if we don't have to, if they can use these panic bars, that's, they'll save us seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars right there, just as your panic bar.
They should, those panic bars are pretty expensive.
Yeah.
Those doors have reinforced lock locks, that took forty-six weeks to deliver, if I remember correctly, which I know.
So, they're good panic bars, so, I, I can't imagine they won't be able to get used, so then, uh.
All right, see what you can negotiate, so you, you wanna, uh, put a ceiling on it, or? Up to?
We, we can, but we can take the, you know, the fifty-two looking keys for now, or, well, that's also, we do.
Let's just say up to three thousand, you mean, you can negotiate lower than, twenty-one, twenty-one hundred of it subsidized or anything.
Exactly.
Through the compromise. Okay, and that should maybe get us a reduction in insurance, I don't know.
That also included, that doesn't include the safety glass, although it's low over three hundred.
With the safety glass, which we need.
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, motion to approve the safety glass for three hundred and the, uh, this dash lock up to three thousand dollars.
I'll make that second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carry, anything else? Okay, now the public portion?
No, we have one more thing. M and R Energy?
Oh, M and R Energy, yeah. I talked to Buddy about this today, he thinks that that, you know, based on Central Hudson's rates over the whole year, which is cheaper today, but the average for the whole year, M and R Energy, we should probably go with for the forty-two point nine cents, or point four two nine, uh, for a twenty-four month period. They were cheaper than Zoom Energy, Constellation, and East Coast Power. Okay, motion to approve that for two years? Can we get, second?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, carry. Now, when does the, the previous agreement end?
Uh, in some.
So it's goes right into effect right after that? Okay, good, thanks, anything else? Yes, let's go ahead.
Kinda like what Mike was saying over there about, uh, you know, helping this village out. So, I don't know if you're aware, you probably are aware, that newly town road's being closed for a week, uh, and it retracts this way. So, the potential of that truck traffic, they're only gonna have two accesses, one west, one east. And, um, so, for that week, it certainly appears that there'll be a, um, a larger amount of tractor trails coming through this village, so you should be aware of that, and perhaps even if you could talk to those companies on this side, to, I don't know, if the county submitted a, uh, traffic plan to you, or a detour plan, or anything like that?
I didn't see one, I got some correspondence from the town supervisor with the route.
They're, it's written that they're supposed to go up four sixteen, two oh seven Maybrook Road to the blinking light on two oh eight.
Yeah, but that's not this side, this side, I'm talking about this side.
Yeah, either way, whether they're, they're trying to get there, they gotta go off eighty-four, go the opposite way, so, whether they do it or not, but it's supposed to go through Maybrook.
And I, I don't know if anybody noticed, uh, Friday, or a little after twelve o'clock here, uh, a wide load came through here and blocked the intersection, he couldn't make the turn. So, with what you're trying to put together, maybe wide loads, I don't know, that could be like maybe a, 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 coming through this village at all, because just to make that turn, it's extremely difficult for a tractor trailer to get out the wide loads.
Definitely, Kevin, is that even allowed? I mean, this road, this road is put in, and all these houses are so close here. Definitely. Kevin, is that even allowed? I mean, this road, this road is put in, and all these houses are so close here.
Um, again, it's a state highway, and.
Yeah, but they can't just move anything through here. This was a dirt road, that's why the houses are so flat.
See, Mike, I don't, I don't, I understand the problem, believe me, I do, but I think you need the total cooperation of DOT. They're the only ones that can regulate traffic on their roads.
But don't they, on that, they have to give a plan?
Something like the wide low, for instance, or, you know, lowering speed limits for trucks and all that.
Do we know this for a fact, though? Because I had asked about a month ago, do we know how you check into this? Are you sure on this? Because I've seen it, where they slow, they're slowing.
Well, even David, when he was here, said he wasn't sure about lowering traffic.
Okay, I think I got the numbers still out, and will you give me, before you give me the winnings? I wanna know. We could be passing something over that could really be, hold this up.
I'll check it out.
So when I was working, that if you had a wide load, you had to get a special permit to take a wide load through anywhere. And DOT either approves it or not. So I guess part of my suggestion would be is that perhaps a letter or something goes out that through the village of Montgomery, perhaps they exempt wide loads coming through this village. That's one step. You know, prohibit some of these things. I don't know if you've seen anybody that truck, it was a swoon hole.
I didn't say.
It was a swoon hole, and it just flows down the whole intersection.
I see, but it's funny that you said this, because years ago, probably ten years ago, Mike Ford got pulled over by State DOT because the plow was on the truck, and it wasn't snowing. And we didn't have a wide load on our trucks. So.
Yeah, there are, especially tow booths and everything, because.
But, so he says if you get a wide load, then you can, you know, you can go on any street that you want, so I don't think it's going to, I don't know if that's gonna make a difference, as long as they have the wide load permit, as long as they're checking on it.
I know going across the bridge, when I used to, when I used to work at Newport, they'd be on the side, they couldn't, they'd get escorted. There'd be like ten of them, people.
Steve, maybe you could check into that in addition to Kevin, too.
Sure.
I know, I know, O and R, they brought a shuck reactor up a couple of years ago, and they had major permits, they had to get through both, going through toll areas and everything. It was, it was a major deal.
I'd say it got to be something happened, and a bus guy did the wide load, they go, find out who was on the whiteboard.
I've seen houses go over that bridge and up seventeen K.
Okay, is that it?
Yeah.
Yes, me.
Yeah, I think it's really okay to make some noise around these issues, because it's been longstanding and it's becoming more and more of a problem. And I, and I like the letter that you crafted that's going to the DOT, and I was kind of hoping that a copy of that can go to the Town of Montgomery too, because we have to, like, work together, you know?
Because CC with Town of Montgomery, you know, as well?
Yes.
And maybe even the two villages as well? Anything else? Yes, Tom?
Steve, you know, this year, you know, our village has been faced with a lot of challenges, external challenges that went out of the woods, I mean, but we can mitigate them if we form a strategic plan against DOT signs. So, being a Class A commercial driver for forty years, professional trucker, I wouldn't play devil's advocate, I'm gonna tell you why I, as a trucker, don't wanna see these signs go up, okay? I drove a twenty-six foot long utility line truck, it was twelve feet high, it weighed sixteen tons. I trailed six forty-five foot telephone poles behind it. Now, the average person in this room is crossing a bridge over the money killer Schwangum that says weight limit five ton, no problem, you ignore this sign, you can ride over the bridge. I'm three times overweight, I've got a detour. And I tell you, the most important scary sign I ever saw, thirty years ago when I first moved here, I was working on seventeen K, I told my boss I'm going home for lunch, he said, look, Tom, after lunch, go down Goshen and help the crew out, they need, they need a hand. Never been to Goshen. I had to get an Haxter map, four sixteen to two oh seven, make a right, straight shot, right into Goshen, easy, right? Go down four sixteen and make a right, see this railroad truss?
You better be in the middle.
I go, I blow right by this yellow sign in black letters that says nine feet, two inches, and it took a second to realize what I just read, and I was standing on the air brake. So I pulled those aside a row, and the nine feet, six inches is the bottom of the arch, the minimum height. But in the middle, at the apex, the top, if you drive down the old, and make sure the cars are coming the other way, you can squeeze through. So, as a trucker, I pay strict attention to something better than anybody else. So anyway, thirty-two years, never had a citation because I never got pulled over, until I retired. When I retired, I went to work for Hodgson's Farm to Run, Albany Post Road, fifty-two where Bonnie Plants is now. And Rich and Melissa are wonderful people. So I used to drive down to Union Square Market for Rich, twice a week. And I drove a twenty-eight foot, you know, box truck. It was tired, it was old, you know? And, you know, Rich used to call me about seven thirty at night after he loaded up the trucks, and there was a lot of perishable, you had to keep in the coal box the very last minute. And he'd say, hey, I loaded up the truck, and guess what? I got a new truck. And the money bag is hidden under the front seat, because I had to give everybody a bank down in Union Square so they could make change. I said, you got a new truck, what'd you get? He goes, a ninety-nine International. I go, it's ten years old, Rich. He goes, well, it's better than nineteen eighty-eight Ford that you drive, I mean, it is an improvement, it was. So, when I went that morning at three thirty, brand new truck I never saw before, turned on all the lights, watched the air pressure come up, got out, checked all the tires, fire extinguisher, road hazards signs, it was a hundred percent roadworthy. Driving down eighty-four, I go through the toll booth, get on eighty-seven south. There's a state police officer parked there. Soon as I went through the toll booth, his lights were on right behind me, I said, what did I do? Not signaling, I'm only signaling. So I pull over to a safe area, we both get off the road. I stood to registration, your rear lights are out. Yeah. Lights are black. I call Rich, I go, Rich, that freaking rear lights are out, I'm getting, I'm getting rid of some, he goes, oh, I forgot to tell you, we've got a short in there. I go, now you're telling me? He goes, no, there's fuses, there's fuses in the glove compartment box, and the fuse box is right there. So I got a mag light, an early mag light I had on my belt, in my mouth, I find spare fuses, I take the cover off, I read it, number nineteen, I pull out the fuse, I put a spare fuse in, and I hope I got the right spot. I get out of the truck, the lights are on. State trooper gives me the ticket, and I said, yeah, there's a fuse. He goes, oh, you repaired it? Don't move, I'm gonna give you a second summons invalidating the first summons, because you made the repair on site. So he gave me two tickets, one invalidating the first ticket, right? But one other time, as a trucker, I don't, I don't wanna see these signs. Took a load down to Tuxedo for a church, they were having a plant sale, it was daytime. And dropped it off, and I was coming back to get on eighty-seven, in the meantime, state police set up an inspection station. And there were no trucks in the inspection station, and I knew that I was gonna, they weren't there when I got off the highway, but in the meantime of unloading an hour and a half, they set up, I didn't know they were there. Pulled me over, a woman, state trooper, not in uniform, she had a black cap on, black jumpsuit, black gloves. Put on all your lights, open your rear, opened the rear, I was empty, so I didn't have one of the scales. She checked all the lights, she went around and checked every tire with a hammer, then she went under the rear axle, because it has four wheels, the rear axle. Comes out, she goes, park the truck over there, don't move it, you're out of service, you're inside passenger, your tire is flat. So I called Rich, I said, Rich, you wanna tow, you wanna send me your tow or a tire? He goes, no, I'll send down a tire. This rattan tire team then had to pull, jack up the truck, take the outside tire off to get the inside tech, defective tire off. They didn't write the summons to me, they wrote it to the registrar more of the truck. Now, that was two hundred fifty dollars for recharging. If I knew that, if I saw that inspection station there, when I got off the highway to do those plants, do you think I would go back that way? I would avoid them like the plague. And I believe these signs, truckers that aren't a hundred percent roadworthy, truckers that are independent operators, they may have a beautiful rig that they take pride in, good tires, good lights and everything. They go over to Neely Town Road, and they pick up a container that's junk, it's got a double rear axle with four wheels on each axle, eight tires. Anything, you know, like, like I said with the lights, anything can happen before you get to point A or point B, and you don't know it. You're in the front of the truck, lights are in the rear. So if I knew these DOT signs are up in the village of Montgomery, I would avoid it like the plague. And just one last thing, on being proactive. If you get down Neely Town Road, cross over to Neely Town, the first left is Maybrook Road, there's a sign there, five ton weight on it, at Village Downey, four thousand dollar fine, four thousand. Detour on Neely Town Road to two oh eight, Maybrook, if you're proactive. If you look at that sign, that's a proactive, preventative maintenance for truckers sign, so. I'm out of bullets, I'm gonna finish. Any questions?
Well, it sounds to me like you need to drive for somebody else.
Well, Rich, you're rich so.
You're taking away the happiness now. We're not, we're not against, I'm not against signs, at least for nature is done right, and aesthetically nice too. You don't wanna have a bunch of signs popping up that don't, you know. I asked you to research the other signs, and they came out beautiful, so. But no, we're not against signs, they're kind of deterrent that's gonna help the traffic situation.
No, word goes out really quick.
Thank you, Thomas. Motion adjourned?